Today being June 18th, 2014, I'd like to open up the Charlton Planning Board's agenda. First thing is some correspondence. There's a public notice from the Highway Department that 338 Stafford Street will be closed. Closed to through traffic from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 24th, 2014, for a call of replacement. They're telling me to seek alternate routes. We have a correspondence from Alan Brodin to Mark Huesch. Outstanding pay review payment. Just to re- should I be reading this one?
Um, no, I-
No.
In case it was a problem tonight, I put it in. Um, he was overdue on his site plan, but they overnighted it today.
Okay.
So they did respond. We give them three attempts before we kick in the fines and they were responsive to the third attempt.
Thank you. Central Mass Regional Planning Association, due to an unexpected schedule conflict, this meeting has been postponed. It will be rescheduled for mid to late July. We sincerely want to have you and many other community leaders and stakeholders participate in this very important project. We are sorry for the inconvenience. This is from the Central Mass Regional Planners. We have a correspondence from the Town Administrator in regards to appointing, um... Redlak?
Redlak.
Redlak.
It's the easiest Polish name ever. You've got to get that one right.
At the Board of Selectments Meeting on Tuesday, June 27th, um, you were appointed to the planning board as a full member until the annual town election in May of 2015. Welcome aboard. Whitewater is to news release. They're going to be doing valve exercising and this will be, um... Southbridge and Charlton. Southbridge Water Department will start their annual exercise valve program Thursday, June 5th, 2014 at approximately 7:00 a.m. and continue for approximately six to eight weeks. Exercising will start from Danielson Road, Danielson Cross Road and continue easily through town. Due to the exercising, there may be some pressure loss, discoloration of water. Consumers are advised to check their water before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediment in their house, um...
Hello.
...outdoor. This will be cleared up after a brief time of tapping water. Charlton Zoning Board of Appeals, at a meeting held on May 27th, 2014, and June 10th, 2014, the zoning board of appeals voted to approve a variance/special permit submitted by Gavin related to a property located at 111 Nugget Drive. He's not really looking for anything special, is he?
No, he's just a variance on a setback for a new garage. That's all it is.
Uh, the Charlton Zoning Board of Appeals, at a meeting on May 27th and June 10th, 2014, voted to approve a variance/special permit submitted by William Gavin from Genzyme Trendetic Corporation. It's, the petition seeks to construct a 13,400 square foot building with associated parking area, driveway grading and elevations. The Town of Lester, Zoning Board of Appeals, um... Project name is Sapphire Properties Incorporated at 503 Stafford Street, Cherry Valley. To construct one of three multifamily buildings as approved in 1972, 24 units, one and two bedroom each. The ZBA acted, the Lester Zoning Board of Appeals moved to reverse the decision. The building inspector denied of all building permits to construct one of three multifamily dwellings as originally approved under the 1972 variance property located at 503 Staffordshire, Cherry Valley, Mass. Does he go back to the minute?
Yeah, well, it looks like a struggle there. Back when, it looks like it's Staffordshire and back when it was originally built in the 70s, they got a variance for everything. And it looks like the building commissioner wouldn't give them a building permit to add in there saying, "Go back, it expired." But then it was ruled by the ZBA, it didn't expire. And I can see where they're coming from. If, in Massachusetts, if a variance is granted and there's no time limit, it's okay. But even for 40 years, you know, I mean, it's an active land use and they have it. So he denied it, but the ZBA overruled it and said, "No, it's active and you don't have to come back." That seems to be what I'm reading from reading line.
So they're going to add, um, four units?
Yeah, they've been clearing over there. I commute that way for quite a while and I figured they were going to do something.
Uh, Town of Lester, Zoning Board of Appeals, a certificate decision on special permit at, um, projects located at 22 Pleasant Street, Lester, to extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The ZBA action, the Lester Zoning Board of Appeals moved to approve the petition of Margaret at 22 Pleasant Street, Lester, Mass, to extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Public caring notice from the Southbridge Planning Board. The Southbridge Planning Board will hold a public caring on Wednesday, June 18th, 2014, to act on an application filed by Lee Throop for a special permit. A, to allow a bed and breakfast facility with kitchen privileges on property located at 1240 East, Eastwood Road, assessment map, 123 lot 4A. We have a couple bills to pay. We have a bill from BT Printing Coffee Center for $218. And I have a bill from Graves Engineering for $721.60. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second? On the table? Catch us up with the bills and the general business. We do have a preliminary discussion at 7:15, a little early.
We can go though, it's because it's not a public hearing.
Uh, 7:15, Russ Jennings, site plan preliminary discussion continues.
Oh.
Hey, Russ.
How's everybody?
Fine.
Good.
Pretty pictures.
Thank you.
Pretty pictures.
You have, uh-
Same one as I've got?
Yeah, there's a couple minor additions, but nothing really.
Yeah, if I could keep one of the four after tonight, just for the file, that'd be fine. Well, Russ is on for a second preliminary discussion. Uh, he was in this fall. And for projects this big, there can be one or two, sometimes even three, just to touch base as he's heading toward putting together a site plan. So, um, I've been talking to you regularly, I've been talking to Mike Loin, I know he's working on it, but it's, it's a good stage to touch base again and also bring new board member up to snuff on what you've been talking about with the board. So, anything you'd like to point out in particular or bring the board up to date in general would be appreciated. Thank you.
Well, like you just said, um, at this point, I'm really just working on the engineering stuff, flagging the wetlands, doing the biography, trying to come up with a real good engineering control on the site so that our dreams can actually become reality. So, that's, um-
Nice tagline.
It's only the truth.
And you're still looking to do, like, different phases?
Oh, yes, definitely, yeah. It's, um, you know, we're just, uh, working on phase one right now, um, and, you know, trying to keep the bigger picture in mind with all of that.
Idea for phase one, are you looking at the upper left-hand?
Um, if you were to print out the map so that you're reading left to right, um, the upper left, it would be more or less, um, the middle bottom.
So you'd be running a driveway to that section?
Correct.
And then build it farther north for future phases?
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Now, all access is off Brookfield Route?
Um, temporary.
Gotcha.
Temporary.
All right.
Yep. That's, that's, that's a lot of theory.
You've probably said this before and I apologize, I know I missed the last meeting. What is the build-out phase? How many years are we talking from start to finish?
Um, I'm, it's really tough to tell, I'd say five to 10 years. You know, optimistically, five.
Sure, right, of course.
You know, depends on your popularity of the project.
Now, are you looking for sponsors?
Um-
Corporate sponsors?
We will be, yes.
Does that mean that there's going to be, um, oh, there's going to be the billboards and stuff up around to-
Um, I really haven't, I guess my, my theory on things is, um, you know, it's one step at a time.
Okay.
It's like a baby.
Okay.
It's going to walk and talk all on its own.
Okay.
You can't really push the baby to talk any faster or walk any faster. It's going to happen in its own time. So, right now, trying to get the baby to, uh, go. So, that's my window of thought and, you know, with a project this size, I don't want to get bogged down in the-
Sure.
-way down the road thinking before doing what I need to do to get to the goal.
I guess what I'm asking is financing-wise, if you're relying 90% on corporate sponsors, of course, they're going to want recognition. So as part of the plan, then we would probably, well, I would probably want to say I think so for anybody else, um, how that's going to be recognized. Only because if you're putting up billboards, and I'm just using that, I'm not saying that you are by any stretch, you might just do what the Charlton Little League does, you know, with their cute little signs. But if, let's say, Powerade comes in, the, if you're putting a billboard up on Route 49, that would be then part of the plan. So are you self-financing or are we?
Um, at this point, self-financing.
Okay, awesome.
We're taking donations.
Always acceptable, right?
Absolutely. Just so you guys know.
As long as my picture gets out on Brookfield Road, we'll be all set.
Now, neighbors, would you say ballpark, close, approximately the nearest residence would be?
Um, well, just to give you a picture of distance, and it's very tough on this scale. If you were to go from the letter T-
Yep.
Up by where it says road, being C through T, um, all the way back to F, which would be the interesting helicopter pad, um, that's roughly one mile.
Okay. That's pretty to scale then.
So, from my mother's house to that is-
Where's your mother's house?
Uh, right, right at the T.
Okay.
Right at the T.
Right next to the religious area.
So let's see, picture if I was right there on the billboard.
So you would, you would probably try to start with, with, say, like, T, S and R, double Cs first, right? Try to get that going first?
Um, no, the more A, B, C, D, E in that, in that fashion.
So you're, you're going to have a driveway from the road heading down to where about it says K? And he'd build that section, Mr. Chairman, as phase one? And then he'd infill back to the north in future phases? So actually, your first phase is farther away from a butter than any of those?
Always.
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Yep.
Now, is your campground going to be just tents or you going to have full hookup sites with water, sewer and all that?
Eventually.
Everything's eventually?
Right now, it's, it's just barely tents.
Maybe we'll clear a spot.
It's called camping in the woods back there.
So I can go there for the weekend?
Yes.
And then that's about 10 cents for the motocross car right there.
I appreciate Russ has met during the day, himself and Mike Loin and myself, and Mike Andrea from Graves a few times, getting some input from Mike on topography and drainage. So that's been very helpful in moving along. Um, I know that you loved to have it in yesterday and it really depends on, um, on Burton Engineering. How are they doing on getting to a phase once a bit, or time-wise?
Um, they're, they're doing very well. I mean, it is, it is a larger scale project and again, I've, um, doing developments in the town of Lons that come up. I know when to push and when not to. I'm trying to be patient, so that's-
It's a big project, it'll take time.
Yes. All, all in time.
Exactly.
All in time.
You did your total flyover and you delineated the wetlands, so it was a big phases.
Yes. Look, they are now, it's, for, for me personally, at this point, I'm, it's really a waiting game until-
They get their work done. So you haven't gone full constipation yet?
No. That's, you know, that's, uh, part of learning the ABCs in, you know, almost first grade, so.
So the board will have a concept plan like this to guide the long-term, but the site plans will come in phase by phase and that's routine for a large project like that.
Really, at this stage of the game, um, you know, we have come to Alan Lott and reached out to him, to point us in the right direction and also, um, to, to get that direction. This is, uh, you know, what do you do? What do you do first? There's no procedure, no policy for this, so it's, um, it's great that we have a very good planner.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That we can come to and ask these things and have them point us in the right direction. So that's, that's part of how we're hoping to work this project with everyone. It's more a rest. How can you help us? Because, you know, right now, we're standing in the big dark room with the candle from where we go.
Now, this has nothing to do with planning per se, but do you intend to have all of these activities happening at the same time? Because I see that there's a religious area, there's the equestrian stables, there's the motocross. I mean, will we, is your plan to, I guess, to have seasons for these things? Or is, will the horseback riders be over here and the motocross people will be revving up over here? And then there'll be people praying on this end? I mean, is that kind of-
There is, there is a lot of overlap and, um, I mean, a very simple example of the overlap is we've had a lot of motocross races, um, whether it be priest, clergyman, pastor, whatever it may be, they, they're part of the opening ceremonies, the blessing, things like that. So, um, you know, and it's, um, it, it's very interesting to see how all of these ideas do come together in the overlap. So they will overlap, some things will run hand in hand, um, but again, that's-
Right. As someone who, I sit on the Chamber Economic Development Committee and I can tell you that a project like this is going to put us on the map. I mean, it is awesome. We are so excited. And I know I'm asking a lot of questions. I don't mean to, um, be insensitive to the fact that this is a huge project, but it's just so exciting. And I'm thrilled that someone is finally taking it on because it's going to be, if it's, when it comes to fruition, it's going to be the best thing that happened in this area.
I, I agree. And, you know, it's, um, we, us as a group, we're a startup and it's bigger than we are. So it's, you know, it's going to branch out to everybody and that's what makes it. I call it a community impact project.
Oh, sure.
And that's what it's for.
Certainly, in a very positive way.
Yeah, oh, it's all positive and that's a period.
Yeah.
We've built houses, done residential subdivisions in our family for years.
Mm-hmm.
You know, development of this size would just cripple the town with police, fire, schooling, tax base, killer, right? So economic development-
Exactly, because this will bring people in. Right now, for soccer, we go to Oxford, more horses. You just don't have that in Charlton right now. And now you'll bring everybody, this will be the old Sturbridge Village in Charlton.
Oh, yeah, and then just teenagers, you know, high teenage-
Summer jobs, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, as well as just full-time positions.
Right.
She's going to phone a daycare and you'll be, you'll have everything on whatever happens.
Really, there's, there's lots and ideas for everything and it's, um, you know, it's having conversations like this that one idea leads to, right, let's see, five, five ideas to go. And that's how, um, we hope this project is going to work, so.
Awesome.
It's creativity at its finest.
I think, uh, all of us collectively can do so much, it's amazing. You don't need to do a zone change, do you?
Everybody, everybody already does all that stuff.
No, they do.
I just don't know that they do.
Yeah, that's right.
They ride horses.
Yeah, no, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they can, yeah.
They bike, they can, um, they're already out there.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just, it's organizing all of these things.
Exactly.
Yeah, so hopefully the first couple projects you do, you know, get you guys up and running so that you can keep going with the, with the other ideas.
Yes.
Hopefully the first couple of the, uh-
Well, it's going to be about finding the balance and, you know, what's, what's right for all of us and what just moves it ahead to make it happen, so.
Do you foresee any butter issues?
Um, well, really, my plan of development in general is when I come into an area and I do residential development, and you're my neighbor.
Yes.
You're the first person I approach and I go, this is what I'm doing, this is how. Naturally, no one wants their backyard changed. It's a given. We all just would love to have what's there, stay there forever. Is it reasonable?
Yep, unless you buy the backyard.
Correct. And that's always an option. But I would hope that at the end of the development, the person would say, "I'm glad you did this development," as opposed to someone else, because number one, you came to me early, gave me the respect as a neighbor and said, you know, "While we're doing what we're legally permitted to do, we're going to take your consideration, give you the understanding that you deserve and respect as a neighbor and come to us if you have any questions or problems."
Well, if the skates go closer to your house versus the motorbike.
I do appreciate that Ray, as a planner, that Ray, Russ from the very beginning has been brainstorming how to design it in a way that takes into account concerns like that from the very beginning. Because like you said, location, particular mix of layout, it lessens very much a lot of stuff and he's been doing that from the very beginning. That's a good thing, appreciate it.
Anybody else have any other questions for us?
I have a lot, I'm going to say.
I think you've got Ray Engineering Firm.
Oh, I think so.
Yes.
We're, we're, uh, we're happy, we're working together and, I mean, it's great when your engineering firm is as excited about the project as you are.
So, correct.
Yeah. Some energy.
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic.
All right, well, I'll be back.
Sounds better. Hopefully, hopefully when we come back, we have the public caring team at this thing moving.
Yes, I, that's what we're working for, that would make us, I mean, when the baby's ready, I'll be bringing it in. So I'll review this one.
Thank you.
And I'll take back the rest of the secret documents. Well, thank you everyone for their time.
Appreciate you coming in, giving us a head start of what you're doing and, you know. Good ass of work.
Thanks for listening.
Thanks.
Talk to yourself.
Thank you.
They are working very actively on it, which is nice. Fantastic. Okay. We have our Tree City USA National Designation Award, yep.
Um, Jean and I met with Molly Freilacher and Julie Coop. They were here for about half a day. Um, we were last, they're the two people in charge of the, all the tree-related planning and the programs from the state and they really enjoyed coming out. And they hand-delivered and it was more than we expected this time. Um, five out of the past six years, we've applied for Tree City National Designation, which is a combination of State of Massachusetts and National Arbor Day Foundation designation for all you do elements, trees from site plan, landscaping, to townwork, to, um, the grants that we've done. And normally, they give you just a little award, but, um, a couple of things. One, they always give us the annual hat and the planning board tradition has been that the staff votes who gets the hat and we thought it was the chairman's turn to get the hat.
I got it last year.
You got it last time?
I got it last year.
Okay, then we leave it to the board to designate who gets the hat. Jane and I each have a hat, so now the chairman does.
I got the hat last year and-
I wore it out.
You don't want another one to wear?
Remember, would you like to wear that? Would you wear it? It's a good hat. You use it just very well.
It's a very nice hat.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
They gave us the Tree City USA flag and it's been our tradition to give them each flag that comes into one of the schools in town.
Oh, very nice.
Um, we think there's one school left, we'll double check. We may have given them to all of them. If we have them, we'll ask the board who you think should get the flag, but it, it's a very nice flag.
Could we fly it at the town across the street at the library?
I don't see why not.
Because that would be really nice to put it in the middle of-
Maybe this one should go there.
Yeah.
Would you- We could talk to the librarian about it.
In the library or are you looking to use the flagpole for the library?
Whatever they'd allow. Because either one would give us, I don't know if we'd be allowed to use the flagpole. I know there's federal rules for that, but if we could put it in the library even, they could hang it up. I mean, it still gives us exposure.
Keep it in the hallway or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah? Sure, we could talk to Cheryl about that. Um, and then I've got a follow-up with Jerry Foskett. Last year, they had delivered this huge aluminum sign, two of them, that says Tree City USA and, um, the board had asked Jerry, and I gave it to him over the winter, just have to finalize with getting them installed and maybe one, um, of the, of those big aluminum signs at Route 20 entering town and one at Route 169 coming in from Southbridge. But they gave us five-year stickers to put on it. And then this was very unexpected. The chairman wants to open it up. They gave us an incredible crystal trophy as a five-year designate. It's pretty nice.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
In a velvet box and everything.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty cool.
Can you display it in?
Do you think that should be in here or maybe the library?
I was going to say, maybe the library would be a better bet.
They do have some nice display cases that are secure.
Yes.
If we gave them a little narrative with it, that would be pretty nice.
And then a lot more people could see it.
Yeah, just putting it here on one of the far cabinets.
I think we'd go wrong.
Yeah, but it's very impressive.
It is.
I guess. And that, I'm sure the library wouldn't, wouldn't buy it, put it in some type of showcase.
Yeah, exactly.
No, it, it looks nice, you're right. It's almost a piece of sculpture. And maybe with a flag, yes, yeah.
The flag will upstairs.
That would be good, yeah. And that could be downstairs. But they were very supportive. I told them that my main concern for next year is there is a mathematical formula as one of the mandatory requirements that you spend X number of dollars times the population and then that massive figure. And with the budget cuts of the tree ward, um, I'm concerned, but you guys gave us some ideas to look into some other resources in town, calculations. And I think we can also talk to the school department and include what they've done and hopefully we can make it again because separate from that formula, I think next year we're just as eligible as the previous five years for everything we've done. Um, one thing they did here is they met with Jean and myself and, um, Jim Burlingham talked with them too about reimbursement on the last grant, which is $3,600. And they're coming back next week just to double tree check. Some of the tree root balls, they wanted more exposed because they felt that the top of a tree root and the way the crew had put some of them in, it was buried a little too deep. So Molly is going to swing by for a quick visit for about half an hour, double check it, sign off. And that will allow Jane and I to put in the reimbursement and they're pretty quick on reimbursement. So hopefully in about a month from now, the town will get its funds back.
Your reimbursement would be for the laborer who put these in and to buy the trees?
And also for the cost of a Bartlett tree for treating the champion cherry tree. Yes, all three items and it totals $3,600 this year.
It's great that they actually come and check that they were planted right. That's actually pretty impressive.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah.
They were counting how many trees and everything.
Yeah, we drove to the different locations, the two different cemeteries, we hiked into the field on, um, the champion tree. Uh, they were very impressed and also Mrs. Nyland happened to just be pulling up.
Oh, nice. Oh, nice.
So, we spoke with her, and they really were, um, impressed with what, her commitment, and the fact that she put an easement around it, and someday would like to see a trail with a plaque dedicated to Ken Nyland and, and his concern with the tree, and they were very supportive, they could help in any way on that. So, she's actually going back to talk to some, um, Julie Coop was gonna go back and talk to somebody in their Boston office about maybe getting in the loop with us now, in terms of maybe even getting some funding for the plaque in the near future and the trail to get in there, if she liked to do it. So, it's kind of nice.
Another idea might be to incorporate it into the Midstate Trail, because the Midstate Trail has its own funding, and the Boy Scouts maintain those trails, and if they could do just an offshoot, because they're all over, I know they run through our property, um, but if you, they could do that, then it'd automatically be taken care of.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Um, and they're, they're always creative and helpful on those things. So, I'll bring that up to them too.
So, does any trees and landscaping that BEPAP is doing up there with all the urban construction, does that count for next year?
Yes, see, it will. Yeah, what we do is, um, Mike Andrade calculates the dollar value every year of every project that you approve, what is physically put in, and that goes toward the formula. Um, but we've never turned to the school department for anything they do on their own that we're not involved in, and I think we're gonna have to find sources like that, given that, um, this year, the tree warden was given no budget, and I know that he was told, item by item, if you need something, come to us, meaning, you know, select board and town administrator, but I, that will not come anywhere near to a dollar amount in which he's given an annual budget to expend. So, um, we just have to look for some creative ways to trigger the minimum formula requirements, everything else, we're okay with. Because you do do a lot, you know, a lot of communities don't keep the commitment, it's easy to get lost in the shuffle and focus just on other things at a larger scale, and, uh, these little items go a long way.
Bill kind of kept that, um, trained it in the, in the, in the board, um, that we kind of just kept that tradition.
Yes, it's a good point. Um, I think one thing that will help possibly is, the Carverdale Road site plan has so much landscaping because of the hillside and the abutters, that if that's put in, the landscaping component is put in in the calendar year 2014, if it falls over to 2015, we're golden for that year. It's gonna be the year it's physically put in, so we're on the cusp, that, that one would do it, either year, it's a no-brainer, the year that goes in. That's about fifty thousand dollars worth of landscaping. It's mega. So, that's where we are, thank you very much.
We have the telecommunications tower antennas, compliance?
Yes. Um, the American Tower special permit the board issued about a decade ago for the camouflaged J Hammond Road required an annual compliance from ATC, um, providing documentation that they are still in compliance with FAA and FCC, say, communication and aerial and safety and all, and, um, their Massachusetts office is very cooperative with us, and their attorney provided that at our request the other day. They're also preparing one, the company I've been having trouble with for another one in town to contact is because ATC, it turned out, bought them out, so she's preparing for your next agenda, one of these for another one in town.
So, this, this corresponding, um, makes us feel comfortable that they're meeting all the requirements of the antenna?
Yes, if, if they provide this every year, um, then we know that they're not in any violation with FCC and communication, or FAA on, um, in the loop in terms of visibility or in their, in their active system, so to speak. Which is why the Berry Corner Road one, even though we approved, it never got built, because as soon as they went to FAA, they said, "No way, it's too close to the South Bridge Airport." So, they're trying to figure out a different way to get that coverage in that area and make the FAA happy.
So, I think I'll do that on the landfill.
Uh, we, we do need a vote, Mr. Chairman, on the annual compliance, and then we sent a, a letter to them.
Confirming that. Do I have a motion to accept the letter from telecommunications facility on J Hammond Road?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on your agenda is the subdivision administration, O'Conneken Hill State approval extension request.
Um, Vice President Mike Mallon from Hometown Banks submitted the request for the annual extension, and, um, he didn't have to be here for this, but he will be here in the near future when they come in for the revision, so I just thought I visually refreshed the board's memory with the color-coded map that the building commissioner and I use. Um, I think we'd start with the second page. It's a five-phase subdivision of about fifty-four lots, and the yellow section was the first section of Highcrest Road that was built and accepted by the town a few years ago. You, at the bank's request, you switched the second and the third, so this became the second phase, Hannah's Way, which was accepted a year ago last fall. And, um, they're working, as we speak, out on Phase Three in blue, which also goes to the other map up the hill. The bank board of directors had approved the funding to the bank to rip up the deficient road that collapsed and rebuild it, and Graves Engineering on our end, and Burton Engineering on the banks, and, uh, out there in the field along with some contractors lately. They do wanna come back for some revisions that we've talked about, and that will be a formal filing.
So, they're looking now for the, the bluish area, is what he's trying to discuss tonight?
Well, what he's looking for is, are, an extension of the approval for the entire approval, but the blue area is the one that he's focusing on in the field right now, yes. If you flip back to the first page, Phase Three, which is in blue, goes up the hill about halfway, and then, um, what they're coming back on for a formal filing will be along these four lots, right there. There is an earthen noise barrier required by the planning board because it exceeded EPA noise regs with the turnpike, and they need a slight redesign of that, which is very doable, but they have to come back and, and submit it, and we have to have our noise consultant that we use through Graves review it. And also, rightly so, it is so steep back in Phase Five, dropping back to Phase One, they want to dead-end and lose one or two lots. It's more feasible financially for them and technically in the field to not try to drop a steep road through there, even though it was approved on paper, it's so difficult. So, they'd rather cul-de-sac in the middle of it, lose a lot or two, slightly adjust the layout of the open space, and that would be, make a lot more sense when they get to Phase Five.
So, Hometown Bank's asking for, uh, just an extension of this annual extension?
Annual, uh, extension of the overall definitive approval.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Who's the contractor who's spearheading the project?
Um, Burton Engineering was hired by the bank to manage the overall field construction, and they've hired a couple of different subcontractors under them, I don't recall their names.
Okay.
But Mike Loin himself is handling the field management.
It's a neat project, I drove up there a couple of weeks ago, and you're right, it is steep, because if you see the way it just, it shocked me, yeah.
And the distance is just like impossible.
Exactly.
At the time that the board approved it, and I think you're the only member from those years back then, the entire board said, "It meets our regs, but the cuts and fills are gonna be a nightmare in the field." But the Connecticut engineer he, that Joe Curran, the original developer, hired, really was adamant and pushed his client that they should do this. Now, the bank ended up taking ownership a few years ago, and the bank said, "We don't agree, it's kind of stabilization of those bankments that have been a nightmare for the homeowners." So, it's worth losing either one lot or two lots and adjusting things around a bit.
Bet then the economy was stronger and every lot was a profit, so I think that that was the difference now.
That's a big, big factor, absolutely. But, um, I really appreciate the bank's commitment, they decided to stay as the developer, and they're selling groups of lots to individual people, and they had a couple of discussions with people who did wanna talk about buying the whole thing from them, but none of those have worked out, and the bank just keeps moving forward as if they're doing it themselves.
The houses are so, I'm surprised, a lot of, a lot of sales going on, especially the smaller ones.
Is that unusual for a bank to do that?
It is unusual for a bank to do it for a project this big, yes. Um, you'll see a bank keep a smaller one just to build out or to finish one.
Correct.
There's a few lots, but, um, part of it is, it was difficult to get rid of it when the economy was bad, but now the economy's good, and they're committed, and they're, they're rolling, and for their board of directors to appropriate the amount of money that they did to rip up a road that their, that, you know, the original person they loaned it to built some standard and it collapsed is, is unusual, and you've gotta commend them for it.
I know Hometown is trying to grow, and I think that they saw this as a big growth opportunity, and is a way to put themselves out there, because I know that they are opening a new branch, they are just trying to be more of a commercial lender, and this is a great way for them to stand up and say, "And look how well we do."
Give them a lot of credit.
Yeah.
Got an extension for another year on this project.
Absolutely. Yeah, because you're not the middle man anymore.
You got it.
Exactly.
Next then, the redo slash recap Chamber of Marketing program thing?
Um, yes, Alicia and I are active at the Chamber's Economic Development Committee, and we had a really fascinating meeting a few weeks ago, I wanted to share with you and also with the EDC at their men's meeting. We put in your packet, um, Jane copied, did the color copies, um, I forgot her name, but the woman who works at Smith Jones...
Yes, Christine Thierry.
Yes, Christine Thierry, thank you. Um, gave an excellent presentation with both PowerPoint, laptop, and these handouts, and it just shows how far Alex McNit and the rest of the chamber is going for Charlton and the other towns in marketing, almost nationally.
Yes.
The properties that are available that we and the other towns have given them to promote for potential buyers or leases for economic development. In our case, as you know, we've given them about eight parcels so far that the owners were comfortable putting on their webpage, and I was really stunned by a few things, um, in a positive way. First, the one that says recap adwords.
Yes.
Um, the world changes so quick with social media, and they have shown us how the real estate market gets involved more with, with everything from Twitter to Google to, to all of the stuff. And a lot of it's beyond me in terms of, um, realizing its impact beyond just social network chatting. But if you look at the last page of the, of the three pages on that handout, um, what they did in, uh, the previous quarter is, they used everything from Google to, um, Facebook and other social networking to advertise our areas and reach out on social network through New York, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, and Connecticut. And they give the list of, it interconnects with various websites in the real estate world and the social networking world. They started on May twenty-seventh, what they call the new campaign, they refined it a bit, they dropped New York and Pennsylvania, and they realized, really, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut makes more common sense. And just in about a two-week period, because this was given to us two weeks after May twenty-seventh, there were fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty-nine impressions, meaning that when you click around looking at real estate and stuff, you know how the ads pop up at you?
Hmm.
The non-junk mail ads, the ads that are focused from something like this, popped up fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty-nine times in about a ten-day period. And that is very cheap too, in terms of the cost that, how they set it up. And what they call the click-through rate is about one percent, and that means, and she said, "That's average, it's not too high, not too low." About one percent of those fifteen thousand eight twenty-nine clicked on it and followed it, got into it for a while, and that's pretty good, it shows that, um, you know, a certain number of those people, that's about a hundred and sixty people, really spent some time looking at what we had there.
In two weeks.
Uh, about ten days, yeah.
Ten days, yeah.
Yeah, unbelievable. And then, on the first page, what do those, um, those initial impression blurbs look like? And the original one from three months earlier was just one, it just said Central Mass South Region, and it made that pitch to locate and go into your business in Central Mass, view the properties now, and you would click on that link, and it would send you to the redo webpage, which includes our properties, and because Charlton is first alphabetically in the region, our eight properties are listed in the top, which is good. They realized, because they learned from it, and they're a professional advertising, marketing firm, that for the latest period that started at the end of May, why not have seven varieties? And the seven varieties that they came up with were questions, light industrial space, need warehouse space, need retail space, commercial, that type of thing. Um, the one thing that the committee suggested changing is, the first one that says, "Looking at forty-three D properties," because they realized, "We know what forty-three D is, but no one else out in the real world looking for a site has any idea what that means, and probably figures, since I don't know, I won't click on it." So, what we recommended instead is you move the forty-three D reference below the title, come with, up with a new title, and then just say, um, something like, "Forty-three D state-designated properties are also listed here." And so, you encourage them, "If you know forty-three D, look, if you don't, look at it anyway," that type of thing. So, that was kind of neat. And then, the middle page is just keywords that they're finding that, um, based on the search of what people were using for the first three-month period, they came up with certain keywords that they would have pop up as you're typing around that might help you, just hit return or click and, and lead you in versus you try to come up with a statement yourself if you're the person surfing the net. Some of them are very business-specific, such as a BJ's Warehouse, um, Outlet Mall Companies, um, a few others are geographic, based on what they noticed the people were typing in from the first period when they looked at Central Mass sites. So, it's kind of interesting. Um, the second handout is more of an ad that you wouldn't do it as a, a connection, a minor connection, an impression connection, and they decided to, the marketing firm, to recommend that we put out three, based on their studies of how people react, and the first one is more of a photo of an actual facility, and on top, they put, you know, focusing on if you're looking at something manufacturing job-related, and that ties in with a lot of Alicia's leadership on the, the job training and the job creation on that side of the committee. Um, the second one is titled, "The Career in Manufacturing," and that also shows a person, so they're hoping that maybe somebody who's looking for work or looking to hire people might get into our queue. And the third one is more of just a logo, um, free manufacturing training. And the purpose of those particular ads are more to catch the side of redo that isn't looking to develop a site, but to look for job training in the area that might lead to expanding job opportunities, which might lead to expanding existing businesses or bringing a new one in. There was a lot of frustration at the meeting that Alex McNit, that one-half of our redo grant annually from the state is a little more site-specific economic development planning, the other half is job training, and she's done, she and a couple of committee members have done an amazing job reaching out to nine of the regional and local high schools in the area, and I'll be frank, I understand the camera is rolling, but I think it's a social issue. There's a lot of aversion when they give a talk and they get enthusiastic high schoolers, and then they say, "To enter our redo training program, there's a routine drug test," and the kids leave the room, or they just don't sign up. And we're hoping that it's just recreational, getting nervous about recreational, but we do see on the media problems in this country with the drug epidemic, and she, out of her latest round from the nine high schools, she only got a handful of kids where initially, there was a lot of enthusiasm, she can see the mood change in the room when she says, "Now, if you sign up on the packet I gave you," and she walks them through it and says, "There is a routine drug test for your acceptance," and that's the end of that.
And it goes down, and they're done.
Yeah, it was very discouraging.
Any other random drug raids in any of the high schools?
They just don't show up for it, they don't.
You should see, they have like the state training dogs, they train in the high schools, and they do, in them, the dog, they train the dogs that way, we should see what shows up on those reports. Drugs are never even heard of.
It seems to coincide with what she's experiencing, so, um, the idea of the redo, um, grant is to reach out on some job training for, um, people who are non-college-bound, who are looking to head into a technical skill training program, um, and she's run into that wall, she was very discouraged. There was a lot of talk at that committee meeting about how do you come up with strategies to address that, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I know that as a chamber, in general, the Chamber Board of Directors were actually sitting and talking one night, and we were saying that, or a lot of the company owners were saying that as employers, they see the same problem, that they're drug testing, and now, there's a very fine line, and I don't mean to get into social... And now there's a very fine line, and I don't mean to get into social, anything here, but because certain drugs have become legalized and certain drug tests will check for those drugs as well as others, I live for drug tests to even legal anymore because they're saying no to some, but a certain amount is legal, and it's just this whole new wave. So we don't even, so the whole drug testing platform may have to be redone. But on a entry-level position, just across the board, no matter what industry you're talking, this whole drug thing is a major problem.
But they, you need, you need a prescription to, you, now, now the penalties for having a little bit isn't that, but you still need a prescription, so that kind of, if employee testing, you're positive for marijuana and you just happen to have cancer, just say it to your doctor, that's, that could be your reasoning, but...
But if I'm not mistaken, again, I won't spend too much time on this, if you're pulled over and you have, I think it's a joint, I don't know even how much that would be, but that's, no, you're not getting fined for that. That's not illegal anymore.
It's still illegal, but I don't think it's a fine. It's still, I mean, now you don't get a fine for it, but it's still not, you still need a prescription. In Massachusetts, you need a prescription to have marijuana.
Okay.
End of story. It's not Colorado. Like, you need a prescription. A medical, and I don't think that's even, that process has even started yet.
We might not be talking marijuana, but Governor of Vermont devoted his whole State of the Union speech this year to the heroin epidemic of Vermont.
I've heard.
And that's awful. That is awful. But anyway, I'm sorry.
It did come home to our efforts, and it did intrude in our efforts.
Yes, absolutely.
And she was, she did a lot of outreach, and the schools were very great with her too on drumming up enough interest. But she said, "The bridge from the interest in that room that day to entering her program, that was the dampening element when she brought that up."
Very sad.
So...
I think the other problem that she and I had talked about too is that there's just, I mean, drugs aside, there's not a lot of, I don't want to even say, I don't mean enthusiasm, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of get up and go, where if you're not, if you don't have a path already and someone says, "Okay, we're going to offer you this, but you have to do this, this, and this," they just don't want to do this, this, and this. And that's the other problem, is that the young people coming up today just don't seem to have the motivation. If they don't already have a plan, they just don't want a plan, for whatever reason.
But even in high school, they're pushing college, you must go to college. It's, 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 we even, we track all that, you know, at my job. Versus some people do very well, and some people don't go to college and make more than people who go to college. You're looked down upon, so the attitudes in the school is, you know, if you go and work in manufacturing, you're, you're, you're taking, first of all, you're ruining our statistics. You're hurting the school, and you're kind of a loser now. But things change over time, like, there's always a cycle. Like now, both schools are way above, Bay Path is way above Shepherd Hill, way, way, way above. They're taking the top tier students, they're only taking A, B, and C students, and Shepherd Hill has the A, B, C, D, and all the Cs and Fs students, so it's...
I may forget getting off this subject.
Getting back to the land page. It just really gave me a very positive, good impression of how far Alex McNitt is going on marketing the region. I mean, we do other marketing too, as you know, we do our own thing. But for her to take it out of state to this level in the manner that she's done is just, it'll bear fruit for the region, not just Charlton, but other areas over town. And I think it helps, when I get back to people like Glick McAvago and Joyce O'Connor, and individual property owners who say, you know, to what, how far are they going? They get enthusiastic and say, "Now, I want my property in her efforts." So it is working out well, I think. It'll bear fruit over time. It takes time, but it's working out. And we'll keep you up, Alicia and I will keep you up to date as everything keeps progressing.
We have a approval not required for Sprenier and Sandersdale Roads?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was submitted by Rick Pater on behalf of Spreniers, and it's just estate planning, adjusting a lot line as they plan on putting one house on the market. The current, prior to signing this, the lot line in the back of Lot 81 goes straight back, and they want to angle it so they would have more ownership distance from the lot line, from that house to that one. This angle was already done in the previous ANR, that's why it's a dotted line. It used to be that way, and it's at that angle now. And there's a driveway easement over 83's property to 81's for the beginning of the driveway. So they're doing it just to get their lot lines in order before they put one of the two houses on sale.
Is this one existing today?
Yes, that exists today.
So they want to give more space to that piece of property?
Yes, yeah, before they put one of the two on the market regarding an aging relative.
Makes sense.
Are they looking to put two house lots in this one?
They're not adding any new house lots at all. The only thing this ANR does is take this corner lot line and shift it from that angle to that, and this parcel A of about one eight-hundredths of an acre will go over and be part of this lot. So what, the only thing this ANR does is move this lot line to that.
Just kitty corners.
Yeah, kitty corners, so there's no new lots being created, no new houses planning on being constructed. As one of these two houses goes on the market prior to, they just want to get the privacy setback on ownership from this one farther away.
Is this a lot line now?
No. It's held in one deed.
Okay.
That describes both of them from way back when, but it is one lot. But the deed describes them as two former lots, and that's why you put the dotted line on. Good question though, because it's got the dotted line.
Yeah, it just... So this will have enough road frontage, given the leakage?
Yes, yeah, he took it down to the minimum of 175. It was 200. Now he's at 175. And he still has 1.74 acres, which is almost twice as much as what's there.
When you say approval not required, do we have to sign it?
Yeah, you do your usual vote, yeah, and sign it, and then the attorney will do a deed and put this on record with it that changes the angle of that back lot line.
Yes.
That's what this does.
Do I have a motion to approve Sprenier and Sandersdale Roads?
So moved.
Lot one, second one, all in favor?
Fine.
Say is the...
Tomorrow's the last day of school, Peter, come on.
I know. My daughter and my wife are both happy.
My children share their enthusiasm. What is the minimum house lot in Charlton these days?
About 80% of our residential area is the agricultural A, and the minimum frontage is 175, and the minimum square footage for lot size is 60,000. So an acre is 43,560, so it's a little less than an acre and a half. Then you've got the R40 for the other 20% of residential, which is a little under an acre.
Is that about what the surrounding areas are, or are they bigger than that?
Everyone's a little different, but we're all in the same ballpark. You put the same sizes, because over the generations, you figure out how much you need for septic and well.
Bless you.
Thank you. Look, the appellate courts in Massachusetts have ruled over the years with civil suits between developers and planning boards that up to two acres is reasonable for septic and well in the future. Anything over two is kind of, you know, being more too exclusive. But very few communities go as high as two. The 60,000 seems to be pretty routine for a community laid out like Charlton.
Now, will any of that change with as water and, you know, starts coming through and maybe possibly more?
If you head large scale, small scale, no, because most of the water surge efforts in this town are to serve non-residential areas at this stage. But I'll throw out a number, a generation from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now, you may evolve your water source system physically to the point where it's available at a large scale for residential. And then it makes a lot of sense whether people like the layout of it personally or not. Then you go with smaller lots, that's what you do. I mean, urban communities go with 8,000 to 12,000 square feet, like a city like Worcester, because you've got the water surge. Larger lots, besides aesthetics or just liking it, it's all about septic and well. And that's where...
I wonder if you hear someone else's TV.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it would be your grandchildren's generation that would be grappling with this issue, but someday it will happen.
Hopefully, planning boards make the correct decisions so that they don't have to deal with it.
That's right.
And guess we can go into growth management?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got three items under growth management, and then my list of other items. But one is just an update on the Natures Classroom, the status of it. If you recall, to add there, Hemlock Point Lodge building, on three in this direction, in January, they reapplied to you for some significant revisions on drainage and some small revisions on landscaping. And then we had the problem last month that they were looking for an occupancy and they hadn't done the work, so we told them they had to put on hold. They finished the work and asked for an inspection, and Graves went out. And the stormwater basin was not built according to the plan. However, Mike said, "It appears to be reasonable and functional, but it isn't what you approved." So I contacted Burton Engineering, which designed it for the developer, and I'll talk to the developer tomorrow, John Santos, and they have two options. They can revise it, or if it's doable, we allow them to have their engineer certified with PE certification, that it is functionable, to put that on the record and bring it back to you for okaying that. So they can either go back to square and do some more physical work, or they can provide that engineering-stamped certification that it functions. Landscaping is a little off, but very minor. Landscaping's sufficient. They just adjusted a few locations. So the ball is in the court to decide which way they want to handle the stormwater basin, and after that, we could greenlight an occupancy permit for the classroom lodge building.
So with, with Graves Engineering, then, they're suggesting that it could possibly work?
Yes.
The new plant that they have?
Yes, they're suggesting that it does, it is a reasonable design and it works, but it is not what you approved. It's a, it's a different design and format. The field construction chose to just do his own thing. So we really can't sign off, there's legal liability on that. So they can have Burton Engineering provide a stamped certification that it is functionable, and it does serve the legal purpose and the DEP regs for stormwater management, and then we're okay with it. So it's their choice.
They seem to do that quite often, just kind of mess up a little bit.
We've been through these types of issues on that site before, you're right. I'll be honest with you. So...
So this will be coming up at another meeting?
Yes, but I think it'll be coming up for sign off, with either option one or option two. The second growth management item is myself, Mike from Graves, Clebley Jr. and Tuaklee's staff spent a few hours the other day having a site meeting at the Lamb's on subdivision to head toward finishing up the road and the ASBIL plan for street acceptance of the town. And the unexpected situation which showed up is, as we walked around and were working very cooperatively together, we went between two houses to the easement where the road drainage infrastructure heads out to a very large retention area. And the abutter who owns the land underneath the easement to do his own yard work had brought in a massive monofilth and buried half of every one.
He buried the basin?
A portion of the basin, but everything leading to it, including the manholes. So...
Oh my God.
Luckily, he was home, and Clee knew him very well. Clee has used him both to provide plowing there and to do contract work. It worked out very well, but it took some time. And on another issue, after we were done with that, he said he'd like a waiver as the homeowner from the fence. So we had an extension discussion that this board is mandated under state law to put a fence around a retention basin. And he said, "Well, I'd like a waiver." He was a little insistent, but we just pull it. And we said, "Again, we can't, sir. You have to understand, worst-case scenarios can happen. A child could wander in."
Exactly.
As former playing with him and John McGrath would say, "God help all of us if a three-year-old falls in standing water." And you're criminally liable at that point. So I have a feeling he was not comfortable. But we did tell him that we can put the fence as close as the lip of the berm around the retention basin before it starts to drop elevation-wise. It doesn't have to be the boundary of the easement, which goes out in his yard quite a bit. So I think we'll, Clee will work closely with him and explain to him and show him everything as he does it. But there's quite a bit of unburying to be done up there.
What were his reasons for not letting the fence?
He just said, "I don't like the idea of it, and I'd like to not have to have a fence in my backyard." He just... It's happened once or twice before with people who buy a house and, you know, at conveyance, the lawyers are supposed to go over everything, and then they just either...
Forget it.
Forget it, or someone misses it. We've had...
Right, because there's a lot going on at closing too, so it's possible that although the lawyers are explaining it, it's perhaps not sinking in along with everything else that you were told, which is understandable completely. And I can respect his not wanting to have the fence in the backyard, but I completely agree, safety-wise, I truly think it is necessary because you just don't know.
Yeah, and the other thing is, we've had issues before with structures. This gentleman, very sincerely, and I respect it, said, "Now, I'd like to put up a small tool shed, and I want it right there." Well, that was within the easement. And he said, "But it's not near the basin, but you can't have anything in the easement private because it will go to highway." So there is some room there to adjust the easement and adjust his location. They can meet halfway.
Sure.
Move the shed a little bit, move the easement boundary a little bit, and everyone's happy.
Right.
We've gone out at this stage for other subdivisions in town, I can think of two of them, massive play equipment installed right at the bottom of the basin, with people saying, "I had no idea that drainage goes there. I just thought it was a dip in my property." And we have to then go through that, and it takes a lot of time and money and, and for the person to have to move it. So even though things are explained in conveyance, people still do their own thing, especially if two or three years go by.
Exactly.
Unfortunately. So in this case, I think it's good that the gentleman and the developer know each other very well, and I think it'll work out. So we're heading toward buttoning up everything, having the ASBIL before you for a town meeting warrant article in the fall for public acceptance. There's one more house lot in there, and everything else is built out.
I believe the, the one that's left is, just as you immediately drive in on the right.
Yes, that's the one.
Where the trailer is still there.
Yeah, that's it.
What was the homeowner's reasoning for burying everything?
He said, well, two things. One, he wanted to level off and have some more use of a wider area. And he said also that he wasn't done, that he had planned on adjusting what we saw, because it was all just sand and gravel, and unburying things that, you know, that we saw that day. So it was someone wanting to do their thing and also, you know...
It's a hard line, because you buy a piece of property, and in your mind, you own the entire piece of property. And then the town comes in, understandably so, and says, "Oh, no, no, no. We own XYZ part of your property, so you can only play on this part." And I can totally see both sides.
Yes. We had another one, very nice lady, subdivision about eight or nine years ago, and when Mike went out for his own inspection, he came back and said, she's taken most of the easement, including the retention area, and horse and donkey corral. And so went out there, and there were the nicest horses and donkeys roaming within a corral that was basically the retention basin area. So we had to deal with relocation of that before. So it is pretty common. This is a mild version of it. But it all works out in the end, and we try to work with these people to make, find a way to address what they want and what we have to legally do.
Just like when you approve a subdivision, and you know that there's enough land to build a house and a well and everything else, but the rest of the land is kind of a wetland.
Right.
And people still think they can go into that and have buildings done.
Yeah.
That's true.
And I own it, why can't I?
Exactly. It's mine. Yes.
But you should know what you're owning.
You know, you, I completely agree.
What should be conveyed to you?
But...
Somebody, if not just visually looking yourself, or if you do have the pot, the lamp in front of you.
But if you're a first-timer, there's so much.
Right, and you're so excited about, "Oh, this is mine, I get my..." Right, and you're so excited about, "Oh, this is mine. I get my name closing."
But I bought my house. It's just a phone company easement. My lawyer's with Adam and Showtime.
And that's the only thing you can hear. I'm going to get my keys and I'm going to move in and my payment is thirteen hundred dollars a month. And it's just, it's so hard to digest all the other stuff. It's just so much. And it's so exciting.
The third item under growth management is heading toward our fall comprehensive planning project with Central Mass, the Village Center Economic Strategy. The two planners that are working with us from CMRPC, I'm meeting with one of them this Friday for half the day and we're starting some walk-around. He's, he's new to the agency. He'll work with Trish Settles. His name is Eric and he worked at Montechuset Regional. And he was a town planner prior to there for one of, from Ashby. So he's familiar with this type of thing, has some good experience. So he'll come out this Friday and I'll show him around and, and we'll do some visuals and get him used to it. So that helps him. He'll be back a few times between now and the fall. And right now, it's at the preliminary level to get them up to snuff of understanding everything and the information we have already. And then there'll be a, a schedule that I'll go over with you that he'll provide us for your August 6th meeting of what September through December will be. And then what we've done in the past with these type of studies, the partnership was with the EDC. They come onto your agenda at one of your posted meetings and join you when CMRPC comes out. And we're looking at probably about three meetings, beginning, middle and end. So we're getting closer to the fall. Obviously, it's just beginning of summer, but things go by quick. So summertime is I work internally with them preliminarily to get them a good understanding. And then they don't preanalyze, pre-plan anything. This is kind of like an orientation for them. And then they'll work with us side by side. They'll start in September with us. And we'll all work September, October, November into early December and come up with what they call the DLTA, Village Center Economic Development Planning Strategy. It'll jumpstart some of our issues, bring in some of the property owners for areas like Armin and Diane's property, the LeBlanks overlook, the pieces that have a lot of potential, the Miller property. And then anybody else will be notified who just owns land in the area to come in or owns a house in the area the way you did when you created the village district. I think it'll be fun, but I think it'll be very useful too. So I'm looking forward to it. So that's our next really long-range planning effort that hits the ground in September.
Is that going to be something that we put on the website too? Because that's, that's actually a very interesting subject, so that we kind of keep people up to date.
Yeah, every study or report that we've done with Central Mass, we put on our website and they put on theirs and there's links between the two. So if you look at it right now, the EO for eighteen, the master plan, the Route 169 analysis we did a while ago, they're all there. And we'll add this one to it also.
So you're, so you're looking at three months of a lot more paperwork and site visits?
Yes.
And we've got a few projects coming into town?
Yes.
That's requiring a lot of office hours?
Yes.
So office hours are going to be really crammed in here now.
And it will be a problem. That's one of my items. Then I'll give you an example. I'm starting to tell all, as I, as Jane and I deal with attorneys, realtors, developers and engineers, we're telling them all about July 1st, the Friday closing. And there are scenarios that'll create a problem at times where, and the applicants agree with us. For instance, Jane and I met the other day with one of the solar companies last Thursday. They had planned on submitting on Tuesday, but they weren't ready. They asked. We come in two days later. We met Thursday. Now that's two large solar projects that we need to start processing. Spent four hours on Friday getting it going, distribution, writing the ads, getting them to the papers, getting it to Graves, all that stuff. If we were closed, that would have had to start the following week on Monday. Now, depending on the legal notice requirements for the paper.
Yes.
We could have missed a deadline and that pushes the applicant a month back for even getting before you. That can happen under some scenarios. If we're not allowed in the building on a Friday, it's not a question, this building isn't closing for the public. We've been told, "You're not allowed to come in if you work here on a Friday. We're shutting the heat off. We don't want computers powered up any night." I personally don't agree at all that they'll save anywhere near what they think they will. And also shifting the same hours into Monday through Thursday, you're still losing a workday that under the scenario just described to you, someone's going to lose three to four weeks. And we'll just say, "Our hands were tied." It will happen unfortunately. And like you said, as we have all of this, you can only go so far of adding extra time Monday through Thursday. That doesn't solve the problem that you've got a seventy-two-hour window. You can't get in here and do things that keep projects moving. So you're right.
Is that now finalized, like Fridays?
Yep.
Yes, July 1st?
Yeah, starting July 1st.
That was at a town meeting, wasn't it, that that went through? I thought so, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So how can that be changed? Say it is a problem. How can that be changed? Just again, back at the town meeting?
The selectmen would have to agree to just go back to opening on Fridays.
Also, they have the authority to do that. They don't, it doesn't have to go through a meeting, right?
My understanding is the selectmen see it as a recommendation from the town administrator.
Yeah, it was one of the cost-cutting measures. So basically, you'd have to show how you're losing money and how opening would save you money. It's, would all be profit and loss.
Or how much you're actually saving by. I don't think they're saving. It's going to be as great as it would be.
Well, last year and this year, we had department head meetings in which the building commissioner said, "Just off the top of my head, you'd be saving less than ten thousand." And they said, "Well, one of the finance committee members said he knows a town that is saving fifty thousand, so we're doing it."
Fifty thousand?
A city maybe?
That's what was said. And when we suggested at the department head meeting, "Why not spend a short period of time analyzing what the result will be? And if that's true, then it might be valid."
Of course.
The answer was, "We're doing it."
We should try energy-efficient light bulbs. If they think that fifty thousand dollars is going to be saved in electricity, then.
Or doing what most towns have done by now of cutting a deal to buy cheap green electricity for the town from one of these commercial solar. They keep saying it's coming, but it has never happened.
Or you could work from home. I mean, people telecommute all the time. And if you could, if they're trying to just get the building closed, if different department heads or different department people could work from home off laptops, you're still, you're saving, you was in plural, you of course, but you're saving, the employee themselves are saving gas and you could work from home and yet the building could still remain closed.
Yeah, I would too. Your boss created a problem too is inspections, like the, the building department.
Oh.
So if you're trying to sell a house or close on a house, you, you get no inspections now for four days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and maybe Monday because he's backlogged. And so you're, you're affecting real estate transactions.
And those four days are huge.
Guys getting building permits and inspections. And like Alan says, you're, you're missing a, a day for getting into newspapers because you're not supposed to work on Friday.
I never even thought of that. So if you're built.
But that one day could string it out two weeks on the other day.
Yeah, that's exactly the same.
If you hit the wrong points of the month in which you're, you're being affected by that, you could lose a full three to four weeks before you even get to this board where normally you would. And we have to explain these hypotheticals because hopefully a lot of people won't affect, but some people will. And each of them says they understand that. And I've been asking them from their end as they work at different towns, who else is doing this? And it's usually a very small town, not a town comparable to Charlton, that made this decision to follow a, a four-day week.
Very interesting. I'd like to see the cost benefit of it and real, real numbers saying, "This is how much. This is the, the electricity bill. This is the heating. This is our bills from a closed month versus an open Friday." And actually see the, the true cost. That'd be very interesting to see. Is that something that, that can be recommended just as a member of the town or something that?
I don't know. You would have to speak to that with the government yourself.
I would say that you'd probably take your national grid bill, divide by thirty, multiply by four. And then you could have your electricity savings.
Certain things still need, still need your alarm, your security. Still, you still need certain functions because you can't possibly do the whole, you know what I'm saying? There's still certain pieces that need to be aligned. There's not going to be zero electricity for four days.
It was requested, like I said, the department heads about why not calculate the real number and it was refused.
Quick question on that. And I, it, it does go into growth, if, kind of I guess. If you're building a house and you finish up part A of the house and you need the electrical inspection done before you can move in and have the walls put up, are you saying that if you get done, say on the Thursday at three, you can't, there is a potential that you're now going to go Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and you're not going to see someone until Monday?
Maybe later.
So the inspectors won't even be able to come out?
Even, even, even later on Monday because both plumbing, electrical and gas are hot-tem positions. It's a non-composition. These people work a forty-hour week. They do this after their workday. So electrical inspections don't get done till after three o'clock.
So, and I only ask because this, this affects my end of things quite a bit. So what you're saying is that you're not calling, if you're calling for a, because it's usually the contractors who call. But so the contractor's not calling your cell phone. They have to go through, if the town hall's closed, you're essentially closed as well.
Supposed to be.
Okay, right. So, oh, that, that's big.
That's time.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a real time, right.
And if you throw in a Monday holiday somewhere in that.
You're right.
Exactly. That's exactly what I'm thinking, yes.
Most of them holidays now are on Monday, so, I mean, it's great, you know, having a nice, long, long weekend, but that's a lot of days.
Yeah. To show you one example, in Sturbridge, I was notified Wednesday that I have to do an inspection for them Thursday afternoon because that's just a timeframe. Electrician's got to get in there, the building department's getting in there, the fire department's getting in there. They're renting this facility out Saturday afternoon. So if the town says, "We'll close on Friday."
Oh, my gosh.
You're still in the process of it on a Friday.
You, you just throw in an establishment.
You just cost an establishment money.
Yeah, because Friday's not available.
I don't know that that, that was, I don't know that people realize through no fault of their own, but just the processes that have to take place. And I don't know that when these ideas came through, "Okay, let's close on this date," that all these things weren't properly thought through. Because I know I certainly never thought of all of that. My only thought was, "Okay, well, I can't call the town hall on a Friday." Well, that's okay. I don't usually call the town hall on a Friday. No big deal. But the reciprocal of what you're talking about is huge when you have contractors out there who need these inspections to move on and they can't get them. Or they can't get building permits or any one of the permits that we're discussing.
Well, let it happen once. I mean, let it happen to somebody who has a big mouth and see what happens from there. One of the contractors, we, we have some of those.
We'll have to see the specifics of what happens because it's a done deal starting July 1st.
Right.
Do we have another item?
A few other, Mr. Chairman. To keep an eye on upcoming projects, as you know, the first two solar that I just mentioned that Jane and I are processing will be on your agenda for the July 9th meeting. And tomorrow, we're taking in the third of the next five that are coming in. That'll be the Northside Road one with the spring facility up on the hill there. And we'll put that one on for the July 23rd meeting that you've graciously agreed to add to your schedule to accommodate the applicant and keep it moving. I have been meeting lately with an applicant, an engineer and a representative of a religious congregation in Worcester that is potentially buying a piece of land in Charlton in an isolated area for a private cemetery for their congregation. And it would require a site plan. The last one you did was for the Egyptian Coptic Church about fifteen years ago. So the site plan would look at, you know, drainage and, and access and driveways. If they move forward on getting their offer accepted by the person who owns the land, then in the near future, they move as fast as they could to have their engineer, who's a very experienced engineer, used to work at BHB, put together a site plan. So we'll see.
Is there certain zoning for cemeteries?
I'm pretty sure, first of all, the area they're looking at is zoned for cemeteries. If you look at our zoning bylaw, we have cemeteries listed.
Really?
Every community does.
That is interesting.
You kind of keep them out of your industrial area. You give them to your residential rural areas. Not to be too humorous, but you do.
The price was right.
Second, we put in front of you Kurt Mesk has finished, did a beautiful job on the brochure that's a compliments as a project guide to the development guidebook. It came out of your discussions in the past several months among different parties about providing information in different ways. It's a nice little summary of various department or boards that if you're going for a permit. And it also brings up in writing what we've had as a verbal policy. If you're looking for more of a coordinated technical review, you can contact the Planning Board office. And if you have a large project, for instance, that you'd rather have your sit-down and your coordination among staff between conservation, building and planning, or if we pull any of them, border health, for instance, or highway, you can do that. You very rarely see that, as we mentioned before, but we've always told people it's available. And now it's more visual out there in this contact guidebook, guide brochure. I want to give Kurt a lot of credit for.
Taking the time.
Yeah, Todd and I gave him input and reaction, but it's really Kurt's effort and he's to be commended. We also gave him that picture at the lower bottom, which is from our records of the overlook lit up at night. And that's pretty impressive, yeah. So Kurt had a few hundred of these initially printed up and we'll be distributing it to all parties through him as soon as possible. A couple other items. Again, your, your summer schedule is July 9th, July 23rd and August 6th. If something comes up between August 6th and September that we need on projects, we'd be glad to ask you to schedule. Hammond Wood subdivision is coming along well. I was up there to check things out the other day and he's cleared a lot of area along the road. He's cleaned up the road. He's got two houses going up. And he's looking for a few more in the near future right now. So that's good. I mentioned the solar projects. A few other commercial and office and warehouse projects we've talked about before. The engineers are still working on their semitals and meeting with me and Mike Andre as they move forward on designing them. We'd be with them several times, as you know, heading for that. A couple of quick handouts. Jane updated from our records recently your subdivision cluster open space inventory. And just thought we'd give you a fresh table that we hadn't given you for a couple of years. Two, three in this direction and three in this direction. And the way you've designed your particular design standards for a developer voluntarily doing a cluster to preserve open space instead of a conventional cookie cutter subdivision has been very attractive over the years. And you can see from A to W, the various subdivisions. And you permanently preserved in those subdivisions, four hundred forty-four point eight-nine acres of land. That's quite a bit of property. It's a very successful example in Massachusetts of a local community setting up a voluntary open space cluster bylaw that developers really buy into.
So you're saying that out of all these estates, this is the number of acres that they're leaving as open space?
Permanently preserved, yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They get conveyed in each case either to the Town Conservation Commission at times, the local Charlton Heritage Trust or the Greater Worcester Land Trust.
Does it take into account the fact that some of the, the open space might be wetlands, it's non-vilable?
It does because, it does because our bylaw requires that no more than twenty-five percent of the open space can be wet. So that twenty-five percent is in here, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
We'll add to it over time as future subdivisions move forward.
So Charles was still trying to be a little repeat?
Yes, it's a nice balance and it's, it's a good growth management tool.
Graves Reserve East.
I was just going to ask that.
Freeman Road.
Freeman Road.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Each side of the road, where it's all open after the, the gas line.
Ah.
Or Gagnon.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
It was actually a pretty nice plan. That we deserve east and west, whatever it was. That was, that was a beautiful, beautiful subdivision. Someday that's going to be gorgeous.
Yeah. I hope it develops someday in that direction. It'd be very nice. Just thinning records and moving things around the other day. I found a handout that went to, we gave to the planning board a few years back that I think Patty was the only member now still on the board. We were talking about Randall Aaron's Rural by Design book a few weeks ago. And, yeah, I've got six copies. So Jane, you can keep one of these too, one for you. Just had these around. And there was one particular chapter we handed out and discussed with the board about six or seven years ago. People often think that you're preserving by increasing lot sizes. But Randall, as an expert, says, "You're actually not. You're just spreading sprawl out." So this particular chapter emphasizes more of doing things like a cluster open space or a smart growth mixed use. A former planning board member at the time had brought it up. Like he said, "I'd like to increase our lot sizes a lot more than the sixty thousand. I think that will slow growth." Randall chose that will accelerate growth. It'll only spread it out more. It'll make people more nervous about getting their financial opportunity and rushing forward. But it just spreads out across the countryside more of what you would have gotten with the smaller lot sizes. So that's a good chapter, just to keep handy as a reference. So, that's a good chapter, just to keep Andy as a reference. We had some copies from that discussion, I thought I'd give it out again. And my last item is just what, um, what Jane asked prior to the meeting. As three of you are CMRPC delegates and work for rea- two of you are up for reappointment, while you're the planning board-appointed delegate. One of the selectmen asked a question, it's a logical question at the last selectman meeting. If we appoint, reappoint three planning board members and all three go to a CMRPC meeting, do we have an open meeting violation for a quorum of the board? And the answer is no, if you read the state, uh, open meeting law. Your requirement to post quorums and anything you trigger is if you're meeting in the community geographically regarding an item of your responsibility on a posted agenda of yours or a joint agenda type of thing. So, in Massachusetts, if any planning board, zoning board, any board goes to an out-of-town meeting on planning in general, a state agency working meeting, um, a CMRPC quarterly or annual meeting, anything that falls along those examples, you're not required to post, and having a majority of you is not an issue. So, um, I just gave it to Mary Devlin in writing and thought you'd like a copy for your reference. Three in that direction.
So, you're saying is that if you were to go to a CMRP meeting of three people, as long as it's not in, in the community, there's no...
Yes, right. If you were hosting a meeting here, then that would be different. But when Bill Holgren was honored by them a few years ago, the entire board went. You weren't violating anything, and it was a business meeting, even though it was an award. But, um, the purpose of that hosting requirement for a quorum of the board is, when you're in a room together going over what you're responsible for legally and jurisdictionally, and you go to a CMRPC meeting, you're there for regional items. It's not your jurisdiction, and it's not specific only to your community, doesn't require the posting. And doesn't create an issue.
Like if we go for training.
Yes. You go to a APA workshop, uh, one we go to Holy Cross every year, three of you go, doesn't have to be posted.
Forgive my ignorance, I, this, the idea of the, the open meeting law seems to be in the news a lot. While I read about it in the paper a lot more than I believe I have, say, five years ago. What is, and again, I'm, I'm completely ignorant, so forgive me. What is, what is the worst-case scenario? Let's just say that we did have, we went somewhere, and what does it exactly mean? I guess I'm a little...
Well, open meeting law, I'll give you a general, um, term.
Thank you.
Open meeting law is to assure that any board in any community in Massachusetts is meeting, A, in public, and A, B, in a, in a setting that allows anybody to come in and observe.
Okay.
Um, it, it's insane that anyone can participate in the way they want. You have Robert's Rules of Orders, and you follow that type of thing. So, open meeting law is that no deliberating body is meeting in private and making decisions in private. That's what it's all about.
So, it's the decision-making...
The posting thing is just notifying that you're having a meeting.
Okay.
That's the gist of it. There's always nuances and specifics that are more detailed, but that's the concept.
But just in general, okay.
Yeah.
And they made some major changes to it a few years ago, which is probably why you're seeing a lot of...
Okay, yeah.
And, and with social media and email the past twenty years.
Yeah, and yes, exactly.
It also cautions you, the state has amended it and sent out information flyers at times about having a detailed discussion by email among members, and something that is related to your agenda is a violation of it.
That was in the paper last year, and that's, I remember that a couple, I forget, I think it might've been in Holden, but don't hold me to that, it doesn't matter. But there was an email, and it was a string email, and it was going back and forth. And one of the reporters, actually, the TNG accused them of having, of an open meeting law violation for that reason.
And that's, that's the type of example that, right, you have to address, sure, absolutely.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, you're welcome.
No, you answered a question that I didn't wanna ask.
So, when you have an, the executive session, like, before, before a meeting, now how, what's...
Executive session is more for, um, legal purposes and personnel-related, and, um...
We're discussing it in open forum, would jeopardize what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's a completely different situation.
You said with your agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, those are my items.
I'd like to, uh, have everybody look at the minutes from the last two meetings. Take a quick look at them, see if anything needs to be changed.
Make a motion to accept the April second, then it says presented.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, please.
Do I have my motion for the April, the April sixteenth, two thousand fourteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Epstein.
Epstein, I wasn't here.
Do you have any new planning board business, uh, discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Um, anybody have any miscellaneous subjects we would like to discuss? That's right? Um... That concludes that scheduled agenda, um...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.